States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are short Steve today. I guess he's ill. And so we have some minutes to cover here.
I will make a motion that we-
Can you wait just one second, please?
Okay.
We don't have a-
October 2nd. October 2nd, 2023.
Are you ready now?
Yep.
Okay.
I have amendments from Sept- September 18th, regular session, September 18th executive session, and another se- September 18th executive session. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve those as presented.
All three, number three. Okay, now I'll second that. So I have a motion to approve all three sets of minutes here. Went for a regular meeting in two executive sessions. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Bear with us, we have to do some signing. Okay, and now we're looking at claims, and I just have one question on that. Do you, tell me what levy freeze claims are?
Those are levy tax that we get, that's called the levy freeze, that we distribute every, every month.
Every month?
Mm-hmm.
Like those in town shows?
Mm-hmm. Goes to all entities. Townships and everything.
I will move that we approve all claims as presented.
Okay, now I will second it. We'll call for a vote. All in favor of approv- approval of all claims as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Now we are ready for 2024 Local Income Tax Edit Fund Request. How many people are out here with a request for us? Several, okay. Start right here, sir. Come right on up to Tell everybody who you are.
My name is Dick Richardson, I'm with the Burlington Community Club. I dropped some of these off last week. Do you have a copy, or do I need to give you one?
They have a copy.
They have a copy, alright. And I gave the press a copy. Burlington Fall Festival was held this year. One of the things I was assigned with was vendors. I had forty-five to fifty different local vendors showing off what they have in the area, and making their items available to each, the whole public at one time in one gathering. And I think a lot of them worked out of their home, a lot of them got an advantage then to show the public what they had. I'm more interested in the festival from that, and getting the economy going in our area with the local vendors having a chance than I have fun times and things that may have happened in other parts of the festival. There was a great car show that really helped with it. Last year, the council chose not to help us, the year before it did. We're asking for a sum of $3,000 to help put the festival on again this year. Questions?
We approved it, but the council didn't-
Yes, sir.
By the way, I enjoyed the festival over there.
Thank you. But I will say that one of our issues was competition in the county, and we may do a date change so that we do not, in fact, compete with others in the county for the public's time.
Okay, we appreciate it. We'll put you on the list and give it every consideration. To make it easier on the old man here, I'm gonna go down by the order they are in here in my book to call you up, okay? And the next one I have is Faithful Friends of Carroll Manor.
Hi, I'm Jeff Jones. I'm the trustee of the Faithful Friends of Carroll Manor. And we're asking for $10,000 to do three things: improve the TV distribution system, improve our internet access, and provide building-wide Wi-Fi. The current TV antenna on top of the tower is missing elements, and there's spotty reception. And our internet access is a real, real challenge out there. Right now, we just have it for the office only, and it's spotty. And our plan is to put up a new TV antenna and distribution system, put a Starlink antenna for internet access on top of the tower, and we've got that donated by Rod and Carol Wise. They're getting fibers, so they won't be theirs. And then put in building-wide Wi-Fi, which involves like ten access points and all that.
Sound real good. Do we have a question, Lauren?
I'm updating things. And I know an antenna wouldn't last so long, so if I do, it's gonna be updated.
Okay, yes. Thank you, thank you. I have the Lib- Libby and Abbey Memorial Park. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for, on, to present our request. As, on behalf of the Abbey and Libby Park, we have a couple items that we have identified. And this is our first appearance at, you know, the Edit Funds. So we identified two different projects that we feel would be a benefit to the park. The ball field enhancement project, as well as a digital billboard sign out on the highway. And like I say, so we presented both projects, trusting that the, you know, the commissioners and the council would, you know, look at those two projects, and hopefully deem one, you know, as beneficial. As it, within the packet, I kind of identified some of the different projects and things that going on at the park. We've worked hard to secure grants through the Indiana Arts Commission, and also through the Chamber County Marketing Grant Program that you guys offered this summer. We were able to get a grant to help with promoting some of our events. And we held, excuse me, seven different sanctioned softball tournaments this summer. And that's put on by the USSA organization, and they use our facilities. You know, we host the girls' rec program, the boys' middle school baseball program, all the practices and games out there. We also hosted the Hoosier Heartland Conference softball tournament, which Delphi High School is involved in. And we hosted during the week multiple games there. We held three free summer sundown concert series on Sunday evening, three cruises through the months of June, July, and September, which were free to the community members to come in and enjoy. Cameron Logan hosted a family fun day, which was on a Saturday in, in July, where they had live music, and exotic animals, and games for the kids. And so those are some of the different free events that the park was able to offer for the community members.
Lauren, you have any questions?
No, I'll have to read this. See, I think he's still eroding out, but I can't think of any, currently can't think of any questions.
Okay.
Do you want to state how much you're requesting?
Sure. The, so the ball field enhancement project was, was $23,539. Part of that is, two of the fields we have are multi-use fields. So they're set up, they can be used for the boys' baseball program, which uses about a 300-foot outfield fence. When we host girls' events, they all use a 200-foot outfield fence. So we use a temporary fencing to accommodate those. And then the, the other field is multi-use field, that's 280-foot fence, which aligns with co-ed, adult rec softball, those kind of things. So when we do the sanctioned softball events, or the girls' rec program, we put out a temporary fence. Now, we bought a, and the current fencing system we use was, is over three years now, and it's pretty dilapidated. And it was probably the cheapest that we could buy at the point to get us started. You know, with the idea that it's gonna be limited use. Now we're looking at doing a little bit more expensive, extensive temporary fencing. So the boys take the fencing off when we do a girls' event, and then, and then, you know, and when they're doing the baseball event, they take the field off, fencing off, and then when we do a girls' event, they reinstall it for us and, and help us with the, because we're all volunteer, that do all the work out of the park. So it's a joint venture for that event. Protective netting is critical, because we have the three fields with backstops back to back. So when you get errant tip balls or fly balls, you got spectators with their masks for the other two fields. So part of that is protective netting to cover that area. So, you know, we, we reduce the risk of injury to spectators and that kind of thing. And then adding more shade over the bleacher areas, which, you know, on those hot summer days, shade is essential. We do have one temporary, or two post shade structure in that softball seating area, but this would enhance that right over the bleacher area. So that's part of that. And then the digital sign, that was a quote from Skyline Signs. Currently, we, we really don't have any signage out adjacent to the Heartland. And with the digital billboard, we'd be able to promote onsite activities, tournaments, ballgames. We even talk with the board of, you know, community events, you know, when the bacon festival's going on, we get out that, you know, flash in the bacon festival this weekend, or, you know, the old settlers' festival's going on, or, you know, it's, it's pretty easy, according to Matt, to, to change your, your script on that sign, you know, to, you know, to promote different events. So that, that's, that's what the digital sign is about. And that, I, I think in that packet, I gave you kind of an example of what one of the signs would look like. So on the top heading, would identify the Abbey and Libby Memorial Park, and then the digital part's that middle part that, that the content could change, you know, so.
And that amount is like thirty?
Thirty-seven thousand, by the way. And then the, through our park fundraising, of course, you know, that, if we did a sign project, it would require running power to that, that base, that Skyline Signs would then, you know, install the signs. So, you know, working with WW Contracting and Houston Electric, that would be part of the park contribution towards that project, is we would pay, and it, because we just got some of the blacktopping done, obviously, we'd go underground for, underneath the parking lot to get it out there. So we would work on fundraising for that portion of that park.
Well, we appreciate it.
Okay.
We're all big fans of the park, aren't we?
And we thank you for the council's commissioner's support, the backing of 2020. That was a huge shot in the arm on our capital fundraising project, and then we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chamber of Commerce. Hello, Julian, how are you?
Good morning, thank you for having me. I'm Julia Lady with the Carroll County Chamber. And I've given you a summary, kind of a, a little bit of what we've been doing this last year, including sixteen ribbon cuttings. We're currently in a second class of business planning and management, so there's six entrepreneurs going through that right now. Serve Safe, we've been offering that. We've added forty-four Chamber members this year. Our senior expo's coming up on the 24th. One thing I'm really proud of, we launched a community gift card program called the C Carroll County Gift Card. And so some of our members can sign up, and that gift card's good at all of those places. So it's another way to promote our small businesses. And then earlier this year, we launched Visit Carroll County, Indiana on Facebook and Instagram. So it's highlighting all the really great places to, to see and explore here in Carroll County, trying to get the word out there to bring more visitors. The Edit Marketing Grants have been quite successful. We have, we gave, we awarded all of those grants last year, and we have our third round due here, grant requests in a couple weeks. So there's a little bit more money that we're still giving away that you 've given us last year to promote businesses. On the back page is where I had listed the breakdown of our support. Last year, you gave us a total of $90,000 for 2023. This year, I'm asking for 95. The only thing that's changing is we're adding a $5,000, hopefully one time, at least for five years. And I think both of you were here when we launched Visit, or CarrollCountyIndiana.com, the portal. I don't know if you remember that, but it was quite a project that involved several people. We had changed hosting companies a number of years ago, and that company has told us they're no longer going to support that platform. And it would cost us $11,000 to continue with them to go on a different platform. And so, of course, I shopped around, and if we go back with One Technologies, they can get it all done for 5,000. And it's a giant website. I mean, it's, it's very deep, with sixty to eighty pages, photos, links to everything. So it's really a good tool for the entire county. It's something that we try to maintain. So that's why I had an increase of 5,000. Again, we're asking for 20,000 for administrative support, 20,000 for those marketing grants that the Abbey and Libby Park just mentioned in Burlington Community Club. We had 15,000 that we put back into signage and tourism, the marketing, all of the ads that we run, and 35,000 for the Visit Cell program. And Amy Beechey wasn't here with me today. She's the one that kind of runs all of that, meets with the new businesses. She coordinates all of the speakers, our loan clients. There's a lot to that program. And so that's kind of what our request was. So it's a total of 95 altogether, and I'll share one with the press as well.
Oh my god, I'm writing furiously.
No, you're good, sorry. Anyway, so that's kind of where we stand. And then I thought the first of the year, I could bring you kind of an accounting of every dollar we've spent, if that's what you would like to see, especially on the edit dollars, so.
What's your total budget?
Our total budget minus Bacon Fest is 125,000, I believe. Challenging, like, my memory here.
What do you mean minus Bacon Fest?
So the Bacon Festival, we keep all of those financials completely separate. That way, we can pay for our own marketing, pay for everything that we need. So I keep that kind of separate from the Chamber's day-to-day operations, if that makes sense. I mean, when you add the Bacon Festival, you're adding another $200,000, but we spend it all, so that's why I didn't count that. But the operations of the Chamber itself is around 1,000.
Thank you. This is, the next one was EDC, and he couldn't be here today, but he's already presented it to you, and he will have somebody here at the next meeting if necessary.
Alright, that's for EDC, you say?
Yes. And that is all, that is all the written ones that we received, but I do see a couple people out here that have talked with me.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure if you put up your hand, why don't you come on up?
Morning. I'm Alfred with the Parks Department. I'm here to ask for some, for Edit Funds for a combination of Deer Creek, Canton French Post Park. Deer Creek Park, we are planning on doing a little switching to add two camp spots up there. The cost on that is $150. It's a very simple procedure, and I'm gonna approach RMC about helping us on that. The other one is French Post Park. I just got these quotes this morning, so, been there for the last week that they came through. We, we, this past summer, we had some people in that, that were in the shelter house, had their birthday party, and they plugged in crockpots, and just with the crockpot in there, we had four outlets. It was blowing breakers. I mean, just kicking breakers, it's fast. This is antiquated, I would say, probably from the 60s, maybe, the whole wiring. But we wanted to go from the top of the pole at the weatherhead, down the pole, new meter base, new breaker box, underground into the shelter house up there, with a, with a junction box to disconnect, and then go to our outlets and rewire that. The total on that's 254274. And then we were going to have to rent a trencher on that, which is approximately $100 a day. So the total of both parks would be 279274.
We'll round that up.
We'll round it up, that's, that's what I was thinking. Thank you, Beth.
So 2793?
279274. And if we rounded up to 3,000, you know, that would take care of anything that we would need or-
Well, how about that, from 74 to 94, but that's whatever you want to do, I don't care. So 3,000?
Yeah, if that's okay. I have copies for all of you. I just, if I may, I have a couple things I'd like to just keep you in touch with.
Right, I guess, Bob.
Our budget for this year was $11,945. So far, we've raised, we've got rental revenue just under $8,000. So we have a few more rentals to go. We have an Eagle Scout project at Deer Creek Park. They stripped the whole basketball court and reprinted, resurfaced it, and are painting it, and the, the young men wanted to paint the playground equipment. So they were on that Saturday. It's, it's going to look nice when it's done. I just wanted to let you know that the painting from last year that we received Edit Funds for, for both parks, is done in both buildings. So that contractor did a fabulous job. At French Post, we have built a new shelter house in the, in the campground-
I saw that.
With the operation round up and friends of the parks grant that they gave us for that. And we also have to clear the east end and build a footbridge over that drainage ditch. And that is it.
We're, this is just, I'm curious. The playground equipment that's at Deer Creek, where does that come from?
Washington Township School, as far as I know. That's what I was told.
So it came from the school right there in Deer Creek, or did it come from north central?
Well, it came from, from up near way. Was that north?
North, south.
North central, yeah. I believe that came from there, and probably-
Dean Heil got that.
60s?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, probably back in the 70s or 80s, early 80s.
Was it?
Got that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we've had a lot of usage this year, and it's been, been fun.
We'll root for all of the parks.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Good job.
I was looking for, look through their variety, I think it was. And it looks, park looks throw the toys.
Yeah.
Celebration was really nice, too.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that. The hundred birthday celebration was very nice. Beth was there, and we had, according to the Ferris Tribune, the press that was there doing interviews with people, we had approximately 200 people showed up, and we had around 10, I believe it was, model As and Ts and pickup trucks. So it was a lot of fun. Everybody had a good time. We cooked hot dogs and, and had bottled water, and did a ceremony. Flower dropped into the river, celebration of some of the past people. It was really nice.
I wanted to drive my model up Deer Creek, get the darn thing started.
Could have pulled it, Bill.
Yeah. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, who else do we have? Well, that went by pretty darn fast. I didn't do my job well enough. Do you have any questions for the Burlington gentlemen out here?
No.
Waited right through it too quick. Oh, that's for the park, okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we might see about courthouse security. Start doing some things, consider, because there's not much in the budget that the council approved. Yeah, I think we have to make that priority, the same age. We need to consider something there.
Courthouse security out of the Edit, huh?
Edit or Kim Cap somewhere.
Okay. To help you understand that one that Lawrence is talking about there, is the state has really been adamant about, we need to do more for courthouse security. And we've had a security committee who've been looking at it, and we're gonna have to do something. I don't know what. We have a bunch of recommendations. We're just gonna have to look them over. Is that right, Mike?
Yes, sir. I was gonna talk about it when I get up on the grant.
Pardon me?
I was gonna talk about it when I get up on the grants.
Oh, okay, alright. I'll pass that by then. Okay, well, I appreciate everybody who put in their funding requests. I would love to grant them all. We just have to see how much money we have to work with, and see if we can get it done. And then see if we can talk to council into actually backing us on it, because some of these are really good requests. We have in the past asked for about 200,000. Lauren, for the highway?
250 at one time.
250 at one time. We used to put in the roads out of this, and the council's turned us down every time for the last few years on putting, putting money into county roads on it, which is disappointing to me. But that's the way it works. They have the final say on the numbers. So with that, we're going ahead with the rest of the agenda. We appreciate everybody that came. Highway Superintendent Scott Atkinson.
I'd like to ask a question on the Edit. And since you're not deciding if someone should grant one, I'm just, would you guys still?
Oh, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, I just have two different things. It shouldn't take too long. One is, I was gonna want permission to open bids for the stone and fuel. Got to do that, and I think in December is, we're supposed to-
Okay, you've got, you've requested bids, have you?
No, I, I want to open the process, uh, to advertise.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is-
Okay.
Oh, oops, sorry.
Win and wear and want for, and-
Yeah.
You need to let us, what, what do you win?
I was just wanting to, because I'm, I'm, I got a letter made up. I didn't bring it with me. I didn't let you know those dates, but I was just gonna go ahead and put it in the paper, and so we can get those.
Should the commissioners approve the bid opening date? So we just backed off that the number of weeks to advertise it, so you know when you want to have it, have it open?
I think it's like the, in the November, I think.
Okay. So you want to set it for the last meeting of, the second meeting of November? Okay?
Okay, so commissioners can now, you know, you said bid opening for, what was it, stone and?
Stone and fuel.
Stone and fuel.
Don't do that off, please.
I'm not turning off.
Another one down.
Yeah? Twentieth.
So the second meeting of November would be on the twentieth. You want to set that one for when we open bids?
Okay, I'll move the, open bids for highway. For fuel.
And stone. Stone.
Stone, fuel and stone only? On the advertising, and then open bids on the twentieth of November.
I will second that and call for a vote, all in favor of putting September twentieth as our date to open bids for fuel and stone, say aye. Did I say that wrong?
November twentieth.
November twentieth.
Did I say September?
I don't want to go back.
Two thousand twenty-three. I said two thousand forty-three.
Better remind me what year it is. Okay, on Lawrence's motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anything else?
And the next thing is, we ran into, on the pipe, put, farmers doing the manure, we decided that it would be better to use a double-walled plastic pipe, just have a, because the galvanized rusts out, and the, the plastic, I guess they've been doing it for years, plastic. We think it would work better, we just wanted to amend that.
Okay. How much difference is there in price, you know?
Plastic would be cheaper.
Cheaper?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good.
It's smooth wall.
Yeah.
Run that through and make it out easier than camp for you. I didn't know about the strength of the cover.
Well, I guess they can use it for quite a few years here, and it seems to hold it pretty good. And also, when they put their hoses through, it won't, it won't catch, and then it won't cut the hoses, too.
So we just need to amend, so we're gonna allow for culverts and plastic and/or?
Well, we're just gonna put plastic in there.
And just take the galvanized out? You'll take the galvanized out?
Same sizes.
Same sizes, yeah. Well, I'm, I'm gonna, we amend the requirements for that.
Okay, I'll second it. And then we have a motion before us to amend our requirements to have corrugated pipe for, for run holster. We're gonna make it smooth wall, plastic, double-plastic.